Okay. We're going to call this meeting to order. Could we have a roll call please, Ms. Shaw? Member Martin?
Here.
Member Hamilton?
Here.
Secretary Cordova?
Here.
Vice President Epps? President Osborne?
Here.
All right, would you all please stand and join us for the salute led by Mr. Hamilton?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
Please be seated. Thank you. Okay. The next item is a consideration of the minutes from the eight twenty seven twenty four meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the eight twenty seven meeting.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item is consideration of approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or anything you would like to discuss?
I have no.
No, no.
Anyone with a correction?
I do believe we have corrections.
Yes.
Do we?
Yes, on page. Ms. Nieto.
Yes, there are corrections on the budget and expenditure report. And the budget and revenue report, the fiscal year. And dates are incorrect. All other information is correct.
Thank you. So, we will approve the consent agenda with the corrections.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the corrected consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Russ, we're ready for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm really pleased this evening to launch this month's meeting in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs middle of this month through the middle of next month. We're welcoming our La Casita Folclorico group. I'd like to invite Ms. Perez and Ms. Rodriguez forward to bring their folclorico dancers.
Room Masala, would you have your team come, your first, your first team come in?
Yes, we're ready for our first team. They're out here sitting.
They're looking good.
They look beautiful.
Oh, yes.
Andy?
Oh, look at their hair.
Hello, friends.
You very much.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
Oh, there's more.
Oh. It is.
Yeah, it's hard.
Little bonus. Yeah. Good job, guys.
As long as you are welcome to stay, but if you want to follow your dancers out, that is fine as well.
Better shake it.
It worked.
Yeah, you thought that was a goat.
Like the fawns when he bangs the tree box. Oh, yeah.
I see.
Yeah. And it's things that they used to remember when they were little. Remember.
Would you really know? It's so cool. It's so awesome.
Yeah. That's pretty nice. Yeah.
Really nice.
All right, we'll resume my next item. We have an update from Ms. Sarah Williams from Canada.
Never follow up after things like that. Um, so, good evening, board members, presidents, superintendents. Just came here to talk about TUDOS. TUDOS is the only thing that's on my mind right at this moment. So, we have it on Saturday. We have about forty six educators sign up. We have one from ANU, CCC, a lot from Clovis, and then we have a huge handful from Port Talon as well. We're really excited. They're going to come in on Saturday. They're going to get a amazing brief fire wing commander. And who's also going to give them question and answer time, which is a great opportunity for teachers to ask the question straight to the people. And then we're going to take one group to a PDF line. They're going to learn what it's like to fill out your own wills, to fill out your power of attorneys, all of the things that our military members have to do before they deploy. And then they're going to go up in an aircraft for a little over an hour, come back down, and then they're going to learn some things about MST. They're going to go into tents where they have to make dinner. They have to live, things like that. They're going to show them different kinds of little exercises and things that are going to happen. There's some surprises. They're also going to be on an LRS bus, so they're going to learn what it's like to be on a military bus, which is not fun at all. Um, so we got a lot of stuff planned for them, but we're also going to feed them because we really care. So we love to also give them some good food. So we have an amazing day planned. We're really, really excited. I'm so glad that we have forty six educators. That's huge for us. We only had twenty six the last two years ago when we did the event. But it's a totally different event now. So now it's going to be very impactful, very powerful. It's going to be amazing. So hopefully they'll be talking about it for a long time. Had our quality life meeting today, so I got to brief all of the amazing initiatives that we're doing. I shared the chronic absenteeism, how we went down six percent. I shared that, shared the Zia Elementary School, the National Blue Ribbon. We got to talk about that today. And then everybody's looking forward to you speaking at the BCC next week. So lots of things happening at Canada right now. Like I said, right now I'm just focused on TUDOS till Saturday, and then I'll go on to something else. But thank you guys for having me.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll have a student update from Clovis High School.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Russ. My name is Jayla Harris Hinch, and I am the Student Council of Public Relations Officer for the entire student body. Um, starting off, in the month of September, we had our homecoming celebrations, in which we loved, we love school spirit, obviously, at the high school. So we did our, we had our homecoming pep rally, where we did a lot of very competitive games. Um, and many of the students were involved in our games, as well as the announcements of the court. Students were very competitive, and my favorite game personally was musical scavenger hunt, where we saw a lot of competitiveness out of our students. Um, some went to extreme lengths to win, so that was a very enjoyable, and we had a lot of laughs from that one. Um, we only got to enjoy some of our planned events for homecoming due to some adversity, but we planned to come out on the other end of it. On Thursday, actually, we'll be hosting our bonfire, part two, which we are collaborating with the base to have a military appreciation bonfire at Grace Fellowship Church. Um, it'll be starting at seven PM, and it will be ending when the bonfire comes out, so come out and enjoy the sights. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While cadets, you all want to just step on forward, you always come and represent yourselves. We don't get to see you. So I'm going to invite you to come forward, especially which part of us not here, but we do have, Mr. Coach Audrey, come on up too. So my next item is a way in advance travel request for our wild cadets for February to take a trip to San Antonio, Texas, to the American Dance Grill Team event. Um, I will point out that they have, as always, a very, very tight schedule. They make the most of their travels. Um, I also appreciate, and I'm sure that your coach has shared with you, her expectation that you're at first period Monday when you return. And so we appreciate that diligence to go and travel and represent us, approved by the board, but showing up at school when school starts again on Monday. The other thing that I want to point out is that on their request, they are showing some out-of-pocket expense for students from where they stand right now. I've conveyed the importance of trying to minimize that, if not entirely, but as much as possible to all of our organizations, so that we're not excluding certain students who can't um, come up with those funds, but they are putting this request in early so that they would have sufficient time to fundraise. So I would recommend your approval for this trip.
Anybody have any questions or?
You guys are going to bring us back like a medal or something like that? That's the plan?
Yes. Um, so last year we did go to San Antonio. We placed first in our division and fourth overall. Really amazing experience to compete with Texas teams. They're very competitive, but we are there to bring something home, so we want to have the opportunity to go again this year and hopefully bring home something bigger.
That's right. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right.
So that's okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, you're going again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming to represent yourself.
Yes.
Madam President, our next item is a discussion about a legal opinion that we obtained that has to do with the new law that went into place July one, having to do with public access to the board meetings. Just as a review, it required that school boards livestream in some men uh, board meetings, that there is an opportunity for those attending virtually to participate through the open forum portion of the meeting and to be able to submit a written comment. The, the law was pretty wide open and reiterated the fact that as a board, you have the, the power to set those parameters for participation. In our initial conversation about that, you expressed some important points, one of those being to maintain the order and the formality of our board meeting. I think our COVID season tested us a little bit with that, that we didn't want whatever processes were put in place to distract from the meeting that was underway to have consistency for expectations for those that are attending here in person, along with those who might join virtually. Um, and so we brought processes to you, I believe, in June, the law went to effect July one. So, one of the first steps that we did was to create some of those, those processes. If you refer to our agenda, um, there are the links so that people can join virtually, so that they can register to speak virtually or to submit written input. And our process is that the deadline for signing up for that is twenty-four hours prior, so that we can make those arrangements. Um, since that meeting, and this has been a little bit of trial and error, since the August meeting, we've added language at the bottom, and this was in response to having that ongoing conversation with our legal counsel and that legal opinion was provided in your informational folder. But we want to make sure to convey that if someone simply does not have the means to access virtually with intermittent internet, um, things such as that, that if they were to reach out to Deputy Superintendent Strickland, that we would help facilitate that to provide that reasonable access. And it's more a matter of unable rather than unwilling, as per our conversation with our attorney. So, and speaking with President Osborne, we thought there might be value in the board being able to revisit those processes, have an open conversation about that, and just cement um, and discuss that legal opinion to the extent that, that you were interested in having that discussion this evening. And so I'll just turn that over to the board to have that conversation. Will Mr. Strickland and I will facilitate to the extent that we can, but.
Um, I'd like to ask Mr. Martin, you went to the Leadership Institute.
Yes.
And they talked about this.
Yes, yes.
Can you share some?
Basically, what they did at the leadership conference was there was three ways of doing the communication to inform the, the public. Uh, Zoom is one, our website is another one, and then I think the it was a third one. I can't remember which one it was. Uh, and everything, but it's up to us to decide how we want to receive and answer questions from outside of the onsite uh, facilities and everything. Uh, I think in reading the, the legal opinion that we got, we should be okay. Um, and everything, because we have certain guidelines that we want to try to adhere to as far as our public uh, comment section, and I can't remember what the timeline is, and we need to fall within that tight timeline. Um, one of the things that they suggested, if you want to speak on a certain matter prior to the meeting, that you have a time to ask, absolutely submit those questions and everything. And like always, we'll receive it, but we won't, uh, take action uh, actions, just like we do at our regular meetings. But, uh, everybody's doing it differently, but we got to do it based on state, the new state law.
Well, I, I think I read somewhere that, um, there were attorneys talking, and they said not to confuse this new regulation from the legislature with Open Meetings Act.
Correct.
Rules. And so I think, I sort of think that's the place where we are, is that it's getting scooped up in that. And, you know, we, we always follow Open Meetings Act procedures, and so.
So, I mean, we, we are asking those who attend Zoom, just for, yeah, but for their name and to leave their computers on.
Cameras on.
Cameras on, right. Um, but in reading what, with what the, you know, the, the lawyers responded, we, you know, it's up to us, if we want to do that, that's, that's our discretion, but we have done really nothing wrong. I mean, we're
Well, if someone attends a meeting in person, they sign in, right?
Correct.
Then we see them in the audience, correct?
Yeah, and they're here, so.
And if they sign in online on Zoom, we, we see their name at the bottom, and we see their face on the, is that?
That's correct.
So.
Not displayed, and I don't know, Mr. Boryo, they, they don't necessarily see one another, but it allows us to
See them.
Confirm to the extent possible their identity. Am I portraying that correctly?
So, my computer only displays these two images because I was being recorded for the website.
Mm-hmm.
It's Carpenter's controlling the waiting room, and she can see all the participants in her screen.
Okay.
We have a record that will show them.
And that's the main, the, the point is to get the record of who.
Well, people who just want to listen, they are provided an opportunity in a week. Is that the?
That's the, that is the timeline that you're referring to. The law states that we have to make that available on our website within a week from the time the meeting was held.
That's correct.
And then in that scenario, they would, they could just watch it. They wouldn't have to be logged in or anything like that.
Correct. It's, yeah, it's on our website.
Right. So the only other thing would be that we make sure we provide some sort of assistance to somebody that wanted to log on to a Zoom meeting that maybe had not done it before, and so they, they might need some assistance the first time and learning how to log on and turn on their camera and all that. Is that right?
Right, and I think Mr. Strickland has, um, talked about helping people know what's available in public spaces to be able to access
Okay.
that type of internet. We have jetpacks. If someone has difficulty, I suppose we could check those, those out. And you'll note that in the attorney's opinion, talked about the time period of COVID, that the majority of people have that type of access available on their, their phone. We don't want to make assumptions that one hundred percent of people have that type of access. We just want to be consistent with our procedures and ensure that people have the ability to have a reasonable access.
Right.
And has our attendance group been large?
No.
So.
And I don't know if, I'm sure that probably we can track the metrics of how many are accessing it from the, the website. Um, but we keep it, we'll keep it archived and available for three years.
Oh. So, what I'm hearing, I think, is that everybody is satisfied with the current format that we have, and if the legislature changes, we will, of course, abide by the law.
Right.
An important recommendation, I think, that was in the opinion, was that every year we do our Open Meetings Act resolution.
Mm-hmm.
And it was recommended that we make those guidelines very clear when we
Do that.
do that again next year, and might even consider working it into the actual language of the policy. Those procedures are just procedures right now. And so that might be something that you would consider as we're moving towards um, renewing that resolution for next year.
Will that become something like a board policy?
It could. I think the language she used was that you might consider codifying it by working it into the policy.
Correct. So at some point, we'd be seeing that, to approve that as a policy. Yeah, and we'll have to do it annually. Like, we have to approve that open men, meetings, uh, resolution and everything, so it, it'll, and we come up, and then we can tweak it. You know, we can change it, whatever we feel that's going to work. I think because it's so new to the whole state that we're going to have to work out some bugs.
I agree.
There may be some problem or error.
Yeah. But our intent is to make sure that the public have opportunity to have and see that we're doing everything according to law.
First of all.
Yeah.
We've been left for them to come.
Yeah.
Personally.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
With us. That would be, that would be ideal, right? But when they can't, then we're offering two other ways. With us. That would be, that would be ideal, right? But when they can't, then we're offering two other ways for them to.
So.
Observe what we're doing, so.
And any other thing that, you know, that the board would want us to adjust, we're happy to, to make those adjustments, but I agree with you, the trial and error.
I think we're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go nowhere. You go.
Um, I think as long as we're offering the stuff that we're offering now, we've got the, the um. We've had our, our legal counsel look at it, and they've, they've, they've blessed it for lack of a better term, and so. I think we're doing all we need to do right now till something changes.
So basically, we're talking, they can uh view or attend via our website. Do we want to go with Zoom? Okay, in Zoom, okay. So those are the two that we're gonna have in our, our policy.
When it's live, it's right now, it's via the Zoom platform. It's archived on our website, just with a, a link, believe it's a YouTube link, which is.
That's the other word, was YouTube.
Okay.
That's great.
Um.
And those two do meet the requirement that the legislature is trying to get us to do.
I, I don't know what else we can do, so. I appreciate you um giving some legal advice so that we're not just, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
Blah, blah.
Yeah, you know.
All right, okay. And then my next item is an introduction item, um, and this again is for discussion by the board. We've had some requests, I think, continuing to come forward to board members um from former Wildcat football players. About finding a way to honor Coach Eric Roanhouse, along with that time period within our football history. Just in recognition of the success of that period of time, um, we have a little bit of supporting information as you have that conversation, but. I want to turn that to you, Mr. Hamilton, um, that you brought that to me and I had the conversation with him, it's, it's Osborne, and then also. Have had some conversations with Mr. Cordova, because I believe he's been reached out to as well by some of these folks.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, so, like you said, I've, I've, since I've been on the board, I've been re- reached out to. You know, several different times um, um, throughout the, the years that I've been on and here recently, it's kind of um. I've, I've had more and more people reach out to me and, and um, you know, just, just different people in the community, all different people, and um. I myself was a um football player, believe it or not, way back when, and so I uh, uh, I played for Coach Roanhouse. And um, I just wanted to say, you know, after I got, I got to looking into it, it, it really makes sense to me to do something. Um, to honor him, because in my mind, it's, it's, it's not just about really honoring him. It's about honoring all of the, the people and the traditions that were created during that time. Um, cause if you look at it, he coached from nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand and sixteen. His overall coaching record, he had three hundred and forty-three wins, which he's the, he's the winningest coach in um football coaching in New Mexico. Um, coached four hundred and eighty-nine games, ten state championships, five of them were in a row. So that's, that's, that's pretty remarkable, and uh he had nine state runner-up seasons and then uh twenty-eight district championships. And, and again, is, is remarkable is all that is. The coolest thing about it is, is that he probably, you know, connected with. Thousands of kids through that timeframe that are now adults. And that he, he, he built a, he sits at, at top of this, this legacy that we all got to be a part of. And I, I think it's time that we honor that, and then I think it's a cool foundation to move into the future. We've got a, a new head coach now, Coach, Coach Hodges, I think he's doing a great job, and I think it's, it's really cool to build on that foundation. And then all the great things that we've got going on in athletics right now, you know, we've got a new weight room, we've got, we're, we're remodeling the, the, the gym. We've done all these cool things. We're talking about, you know, potentially doing an indoor practice facility. I think it kind of just is a, it's a stepping stone into all that, and it's a really gr- great, um, great time to honor. That tradition that, that um, that he started.
Well, uh, I guess I'm up. Uh, I too had the opportunity to play for, for Coach, um. And I know a lot of people that, of course, back then. I guess for me, it started back when he started, because my oldest brother was a Wildcat, and they won the first state champion. Uh, and, and Albuquerque, so I remember a lot of, of, of that, and then, you know, uh, tradition and everything, history. I, you know, everybody just couldn't wait to get to high school to be a Clovis Wildcat. You know, that was just a, a thing, you know? And, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we offer other um areas for, for kids to go into, but, but Clovis was, uh, you know, he put us on the map. Um. Friday night, it, it didn't matter whether you were here or if you traveled anywhere. When Clovis showed up, he showed up. And a lot of them, the memories that I have, you know, that, that was built on, you know, because of not just him, but the coaches and, and the band and everything. I, I remember going to Albuquerque, you know, countless times, and you had the cheerleaders, you had the Wildcadets, you had. You had the buses, I mean, you had four or five Eagle buses right there. Clovis was down there, buddy, and there was gonna be a ballgame. And if you were playing, you better have your head on a swivel, and you better be, you better have your head, your hat on tight, because somebody was gonna do some hitting. And, and, and not in a dirty way, but Clovis came to play, and that's what he instilled. But for me, um, you know, having played in the championship game here and coming up short, it wasn't so much, uh. You know. When we started, we were boys playing high school ball. When we got done, we were young men, and that's how he addressed us. And, and, and that speech, you know, it just, you know, along the lines that sometimes the call, the cards fall. Where you'd like them to, and sometimes they don't. And, and I use a lot of the things that he taught us in my days, like uh, you know, one of his sayings was, you either get better or you get worse. You never stay the same. And another thing that every day that I think about is, you rest when you get there. Don't stop until you get there, and that, I think that applies in, you know, when you go to anything that you do. If you, if you do that, you know, there were some of the things that uh, that I carry on, but you know, there's a lot of the kids out there that he did touch, you know? And I think it's time to do something. Uh, it's, it's long, in my opinion, overdue. Of course, when we looked at it, COVID came along. So, uh, you know, we had to table it at that point in time.
Right.
But I think now is, is a perfect opportunity. He's still with us, and uh, you know, his, his record, you know, says it all. He's the winningest coach in, in New Mexico, and uh, we need to do something for him.
So I recall in twenty seventeen, we had um a community member who was willing to pay to. We were redoing the field house, to name the field house after him.
Right.
But that was. A no-go.
Yeah.
Whatever reasons. So, so what is the proposal?
I, I personally would like to name the field, just the field. Uh, Eric Ron Housefield. So it, in my, in my eyes, it's a Leon, uh, Eric Ron Housefield at Leon Williams Stadium. Um, I know that there's some issues with that because of the, you know, we just laid down uh another, uh, some turf. But I think we can work that in, I think it should be worked in, but another way that I, I was thinking, um. And we have some, some people here that are willing to work with us on this, I believe, is underneath the scoreboard. You know, and of course, it has all his, you know, the history of the championship games there, uh, the state championship games. But, you know, underneath there, uh, with the permission of Close Bank, because they did give us that scoreboard, I believe, is to put a sign that says Eric Ron Housefield. And so, you know, when you look at scoreboard, you see, you see that. That's what I would like to.
And so the group that's coming before us, are they offering um a pay source? And I'm only asking this because, you know, we closed schools and, you know, they are.
Yes, ma'am, yes. The, um, well, I s- I s- I say that the, um, I talked to uh Clovis sign. And they're willing to donate the sign that would go underneath the scoreboard um and, and mount it for us and everything. So, we would have that taken care of. Um, the, the stuff that we would do on the, on the field would, would be at, at our expense. But I'm sure that we could probably get some, some fundraising for that too, if need be. I haven't, I haven't approached that yet, but, but I would be glad to if, if, if we need to. Um, we reached out to uh Bank of Clovis, and they've given us their permission, because it's, they're sponsoring the scoreboard to. Go ahead and put that stuff underneath it. Um, so, so we've got that base covered, but um, anyway.
I know, and uh, the source that at the time was willing to, to donate, I can approach him again, and I, cause he, he just told me, just let him know when. When we were wanting to do something, what we were willing to do as a board, uh, and he would.
And so we just did our new field, so, what, Mr. Brady?
We're three years away from replacing it maximum. It's in rough shape, and it's gonna be a year-to-year evaluation. Uh, on the field and its replacement. We had testing done a year ago, a little over a year ago, and that was the estimate that the company gave us.
So a year ago, we were three years out? Am I understanding that right? Hmm, so I'm not hearing that people want to wait three years, though.
Not my understanding, no.
Is there something we could do alternatively right now before we replace it?
Yes, sir. Uh, we've investigated, we haven't gotten a price back from the folks that managed that. Their regulations to go in and paint uh the name and the logo that we want to put on there uh on the field. And then once we uh come back and replace the turf, that can be permanently replaced into the turf where we want to get ready to replace that.
Okay, we're just waiting on a, on a um, an amount right now of what that would cost?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, the chair.
Yes.
I heard everybody say. I'm not against what they're saying. I think the man should be honored. He is the most winningest high school coach in the state of New Mexico. And I doubt his record would ever be beaten or broken. My problem is this, I have no problem with the sign, I have no problem calling Eric Roundhouse. Fill and put in whatever we need to do on the scoreboard. I got no problem with that. But I do have a problem with added costs to doing the field. I played and played for Eric, but I'm a Wildcat. I think that it should stay Wildcat Field. Which makes it a little bit cheaper for us to replace in the future. We don't have to pay for the extra fancy end zone or whatever, or center court, whatever, you know what I'm saying? It is, is the Wildcat Field, but as for, well, I shouldn't say Wildcat, but on that, we're honoring him. We got his records up there. I said Eric Roan Housefield. Every time you look at the scoreboard, you're gonna see Eric Roan House. But I do have problems with the added, the added expense. We go to our public for many things. And we got to replace this field every eight, ten years.
Ten, ten years.
Every ten years, and things is not coming down. That's just adding expense that we've taken out of the classroom. That's my thoughts, but I support the majority of the board.
Well, I agree that he certainly needs to be honored, and I, I know that this was kind of the, the catch the last time is. What, what should that look like and what is acceptable, and so I guess I'm also kind of interested in how big the group is. That's um, and that's their preference, right?
Right, well, I mean, I, I. I don't know that, you know, if the group should be so large or so small, I just, in my opinion, it's what he did.
Right, I, uh, the reason I'm asking is, you know, this is who I am. I'm like, okay, what do other people do when we, when they are gonna name something? And so, actually, the state of New Mexico has recommendations about if you're gonna name something after someone, uh, you know, what should be done. And then some other school districts have their own policy about that, which I, not to say that, just to kind of get an idea about. How we should go about making a decision like this, and so, you know, all going to talk about um a larger community input. And so that's why I'm asking about the size of the group is, like, you know.
I, you know, I hear, I hear it a lot, you know, why haven't we done, why haven't we, why haven't we done, um, you know, and, and it just. You know, I just start thinking, well, why haven't we done anything? I mean, you know, I have, uh, I re- the utmost respect for Norville Howell, he was, he was in bad, I was in bad with that. And, and we, we uh, I respect him, you know, I, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm honored to call him my friend and, and uh, and the same thing with, with even Coach now. And we, we named the, the band hall after him and.
In this building.
Yeah, well, in the building, you know, with G C Ross and stuff, but.
They all voted for him.
Um, yeah, you know, uh, and I understand uh added expense and everything like that. We, we surely don't want to, to uh, to have more, but, you know. Uh, what, what is the honorable thing? Now, how, you know, how should we do this? And that's what we ran into last time.
Right.
I think me and you, Mr. Martin, were on this board when, and then it just, you know, then we got caught up with COVID and everything, and. But he's still with us, you know, so I uh, I, I don't, I, I think at the time, uh, if I'm not mistaken. Look, look back at the minutes, I think it was, if we did it, it was gonna be like ten thousand dollars at that time. I, I, I don't know what his name, and I think it was gonna be around the thirty-yard line, maybe close to the sideline, something like that. You know, but uh, I think that was, that was the option. This time around, I just thought about the sign, because I've been to a lot of, a lot of stadiums where they do have it right there on the scoreboard.
And, and, and so, don't get me wrong, Eric is, I'm thinking he's a good team in mind, don't get me wrong. But we had Rex Henderson, we got all those other coaches that sacrificed, taught in our system.
Mm-hmm.
They didn't win championships, but, you know what I'm saying? But Eric did do something. He put Clovis on the map when he came over his football.
Well, this is not a action item anyway. This is just a discussion, so um, what will um, maybe. Um, Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Cordova could um bring to, bring some recommendations. For what that might look like, and also um suggestions for how much it's gonna cost. Because I too, I know you don't believe this, I, I have no go drawing us for a very long time. Our kids were the same age, and so, you know. I, I certainly do think he needs to be honored. I just have the same heartache about, oh my gosh, we ask families to do, to give up a lot. We're liquidating assets, and so the timing is rotten. And so I just want to be sure that we do what we need to do, and so I, I appreciate, Mr. Hamilton, that you already found that about the scoreboard. So if we can just find out about the, the rest of it, then we'll.
Would you guys, um, would you guys be opposed if I could get someone to pay for the, the field as well?
I would, because we pay for it initially, but when we get to replace, we pays for it. We do.
How much is the, if we, when we replace it, how much would that add to the, the field?
That's a question that has to be asked.
Can you do that for us?
And we'll, we will uh get a answer and indicate that to Ms. Russ, and she can share that with the board.
Okay.
I'm thinking it's gonna be close to, believe it or not, eighty, ninety thousand.
To add the name.
No, 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 I'm talking about replacement of the field.
Right, but, but the replacement of the field will be, will be replacing anyway. I mean, and that part of it.
But we have to pay for that extra fancy.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out, what the cost of the extra part of it, when we replace it would be.
We'll get a rough estimate of what the field, the turf replacement will be with a logo, without a logo, so that you have a comparison.
Okay, Mr. Brady, and the painting of currently.
We're already researching that, so you'll have the three different uh estimates.
Okay.
Yeah, he's not getting any younger, so that's.
Well, it will be, it will be on next month's agenda.
Okay, right.
Thank you.
That, that is factory to everything.
Thank you.
Okay, you're right. Okay, good, Rainy. I'm talking about itself. Okay, Mr. Strickland, come and give us your best. Which, by the way, you did, like, a million policy.
So. But President, um, members of the board, I do have a lot of policy.
But President, um, members of the board, I do have a lot of policy to go over with you. I do want to say that when it's all said and done, we have three actual policies that you'll be voting on. And then two policies that you'll be voting to remove if you choose to follow the advice. Um, this is new regulation on Title IX. And I also have Heather Woodard in the audience if you have questions about it. So I'm just going to kind of work our way through. A zero two five zero has some changes in the um, categories that are looked at, uh, by the state. And so you can see the underlines and strike throughs there. Do, would you like me to go over those individually or do you have questions about those?
No, or do you guys want them individually?
No, I read them. I didn't have any questions.
Okay. It's pretty standard and some of our other stuff has already been updated to reflect that language. And this one is actually a policy that you, next time we'll be voting on. Uh, the next one is A zero two six one, and this is just a regulation. So it's a, um, a discussion item. It doesn't require a vote. There are some adds and subtracts in here. Um, again, it's going to have the same new categories uh, that protect pregnancy-related conditions, sexual orientation, gender identity. And then, um, there's a little bit of change in the complaint procedure and the timelines. And so I do have Heather here, if you have any questions about this one, because again, this is not a, a, a policy that you'll need to vote on.
Anybody have any questions?
No ma'am.
Nope.
President.
Okay.
We're good.
The next one, I like these are the easiest to work with. This is a total strike through with new ads. And this is a policy that you'll be voting on. So all of A zero three hundred was stricken. And then it, um, is all restated, starting with statement of policy and it's a pretty long lengthy one. This is probably the most important one. I'd like for, uh, Mrs. Woodard to give you just kind of an overview of what's changed in Title IX. Uh, cause it's multiple pages.
My voice is a little small today, so I need the microphone. So there are new 2024 regulations for Title IX. Who was implemented August first. They include additional protections on harassment on the basis of sex stereotypes, characteristics, orientation, gender identity, pregnancy and related conditions. Um, a lot of states have filed injunctions. New Mexico is not one of them. So there's no reason for us not to move forward from a legal perspective, um, with all the policy. Three hundred was updated with changes to coordinator responsibilities. That's my position. Uh, supportive measures that are offered to complainants and respondents in a formal resolution process and what that's supposed to look like. The pregnancy and related conditions for staff and students. Retaliation when a, a claim is made and then training confidentiality, record keeping, and all the definitions and things that go along with that. So the policy was rewritten to flow better with the federal regulation that we are bound to implement. Uh, the federal regulation actually now is more in line with the New Mexico state statutes than it was before the 2024, um, changes were made. So that's the three hundred.
Sure.
Three eleven. Okay. Um, so the next one is three eleven. It's another very big change, completely stricken out and completely rewritten. It is the procedure for Title IX, including filing a complaint and how that is done. The biggest change there is there's not a need for a formal complaint any longer. Someone can verbally say they'd like to formal a complaint and that starts the ball rolling. I don't need an actual document to file that complaint. We do have that form. It is part of this, um, it was called a grievance. Prior to this, it'll be a complaint form now. So I can actually fill that out on their behalf, just so we have the record and the documentation of what that looks like. Or, um, a complainant or a parent can fill that out as well. It outlines the investigation process, how those determinations are made, how those notifications are made. The disciplinary action sanctions and remedies that we can actually implement for students and employees. And the appeal process, because anyone can appeal the outcome once we get that back from the decision maker. The other big part and the big change to Title IX is who's allowed to do the different roles, the investigation, the coordinator, the decision maker. As a coordinator, I can take all that on, um, for not to, because I don't want to have any bias in the process. So we have an incident investigator. I'm the coordinator and then we try to send it out to a decision maker so that we avoid bias in any kind of, um, you know, not being impartial in that, in that process. So that's the big, there's a lot of change, but it just outlines all of the steps.
So if you can just say to anybody, or do you have to say it to somebody specifically?
To file the complaint.
Right, to, to start the process.
So typically it goes to a school administrator and then they call me. I reach out to that parent, because most of them are students. I reach out to that parent, have a conversation, explain what the title and process is. It's a lengthy process. And we can't discipline students until we're finished with the process. So a lot of times when the parents hear that, they're like, hold on a minute. Maybe I don't want to go Title IX because I don't want to have to wait for this to be resolved. Um, but typically it actually is a student coming forward first and talking to the principal. They call me every single time. And then we talk through what that looks like. And then the parent can decide on a student's behalf if they want to file or not. An adult, um, if there was an adult issue, they could reach out directly to me or to whoever they're comfortable with. At the end of the day though, they all, they all do route through me.
Thank you.
And, and part of our other policy is that if you're aware of any kind of sexual harassment, that you have a responsibility as a board member, as an employee, as a student to, to report that. And so it's all, it's on all of us to keep everybody on the up and up. Do you have any questions for Heather on those two?
Anything else? No comments.
Lots of pages here. So Z, A zero three one one, uh, another complete strike through and then added, this is a regulation and will not require a vote. I think there's a lot of repetition in the kind of information that's basically what Mrs. Woodard has already gone over with you, but I stand for any questions on that one as well. Pretty lengthy. When I first saw the, uh, Policy Service Advisory, my jaw kind of dropped and I'm like, oh my gosh. But then when you start looking through it, it's, it's, it's good and it's good changes, good information. Uh, the next one, um, Brenda, did we skip A zero three one two? Yeah, there we go. This one is not going to require a vote because it's a regulation, but the recommendation is to remove this completely. And then it will be replaced with, um, A zero three three one, also not requiring a vote, just the complaint form. Instead of a grievance form, a complaint form. And then we have A zero three five zero, which is a recommendation to remove completely. A zero three three two, which is an exhibit, is new. And it's our notice of non-discrimination. And it also has our Title Nine Coordinator, Mrs. Woodard's contact information, so that everybody needs to get ahold of her. Um, they have the ability to do that. The next one is A zero four hundred, which is a complete removal. The next one, G zero two hundred, equal employment opportunity, quite a few changes in there and it goes over um, some of the same categories and all reports and complaints regarding discrimination in employment, other than those regarding discrimination on the basis of sex should be directed to the superintendent's office of compliance as set forth in policy AC and ACR.
No questions?
Riveting reading, I'm sure. And then the, I, the last one is G zero two one one. And this is also a recommendation to remove and does not require a vote. So we both stand for any questions that you might have on all these, quite a bit of policy.
Well, hopefully when it's done, there will be less because of all the strikes. I'm good. Anybody else?
Good. No ma'am.
Give us a little time to digest it.
And I also stand, stand for any questions on the employee service report. Open positions report, making good progress other than in the area sped. Uh, we did offer an additional three thousand, bringing it up to two, uh, six thousand total. And we actually have more openings after we did that than we did before. So we still have work to do there to support our, our students on IP's. Uh, but in other areas, we're making tremendous progress.
I saw that. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Strickland. Thank you.
Miss Nieto.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Russ. Um, for my items A, B, and C, I would like to introduce Eric Harrigan with RBC Capital Markets and Arthur Melindres with Magro Spurling. They will be going over the district's finance plan overview and the two consideration items regarding the general obligation bond series twenty twenty four and the NMFA application. I'll hand it over to, um, Eric.
Uh, good evening, uh, Board President, Members of the Board, Superintendent. This is, uh, Eric Harrigan with RBC Capital Markets. Um, I will cover the finance plan overview and then turn it over to Art Melindres with the Magro Law Firm, who can, uh, talk about the agenda items that you have before you. Um, hopefully you can all see my screen. Um, so, um, so what we're, so what is before you today is that the district is selling the, the last of its voter authorized bonds, uh, in the amount of five million. Uh, we start off by taking a look at your assessed valuation, what your assessed valuation has done over the last few years. Um, you know, this, this past year, you, you have seen pretty decent growth in your tax base. This has mostly been supported by your residential growth. Um, you know, residential home values continue to trend, um, upward quite strongly. Uh, it did also be fairly strong growth in your, um, non-residential tax base as well. Um, so total growth was about eight percent, uh, year over year from twenty twenty three. Um, over the last five years, you've averaged about four percent over the last 10 years, just a little bit below that. Um, the issuance of these bonds, um, will continue to maintain the district's historical debt service tax rate of $4.97. Um, you also have an operating mill levy and then, uh, an SB nine mill levy as well, which was most, which was last, uh, recently approved by voters in, uh, twenty twenty one. We have your, um, outstanding, um, debt, which is provided, uh, here. Uh, we do look at your debt for any refunding opportunities. All of your outstanding bonds have relatively low interest rates and currently at this time, we would not be recommending any refunding for, um, interest savings. Um, so as, as mentioned the last time, um, you, you had an election for your, uh, SB nine was in February of twenty twenty one. Uh, we recommend going to voters in twenty twenty five to continue to, uh, maintain that mill levy, um, due to, you know, relatively recent changes in election law, so that, that, uh, mill levy will not lapse. Um, and then as I previously mentioned, this is the last issuance of that, of the bonds that, uh, voters approved in, uh, twenty twenty, uh, one. Uh, with the issuance of these bonds, the district will be about seventy-three percent bond capacity. Uh, from a timing standpoint, um, so subject to your approval today, um, this kind of starts off the process. Excuse me, let me close my door because of my dogs.
Yeah, it sounds like a big dog.
Apologies, so. From a, from a timing standpoint, um, subject to your approval, uh, we would be more moving forward, uh, with the, uh, submitting the signed application to the New Mexico Finance Authority. This is a slightly different process than the district has used in the past, but it does result in the lowest interest rate to the district. Um, and, um, the, uh, we would submit the signed, uh, resolution and application to the New Mexico Finance Authority later this week. Uh, the Finance Authority meets in October. They would approve, um, the loan and then we would price the loan in, um, uh, late October and then close in mid-November and that's when funds would be available for the district uh, to requisition and expend, um, on the capital improvement projects. Um, we do have a, a few slides on the market. I, I won't go through these in detail, other than to just kind of comment that interest rates have, uh, trended downward for most of the part this year. Um, as I think you all know, uh, because of the significant amount of inflation that we were seeing, um, sort of during and post the pandemic, uh, the Federal Reserve took pretty strict, uh, strict action to raise interest rates. Um, now that inflation has begun to come down, um, the Federal Reserve has, uh, uh, has begun lowering interest rates. Last week, the, the Federal Reserve lowered the overnight lending rate by half of a basis point. Um, and the, and the trend is expected to continue that will slowly but surely cease, uh, you know, slightly lower interest rates as the Federal Reserve uh, continues to, um, drop their overnight lending rate. And with that, I'd be, um, happy to answer any questions about the plan of finance, um, and or turn it over to Art Melindres for any comments.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. That was very thorough.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, Board Members. Um, Madam President, Superintendent. Um, my part of this is to present to you a resolution approving a notice of sale, which is a process by which we give notice to the world that, uh, the school district intends to sell $5 million worth of bonds. We go through a publication process, so we comply with the state statute. We comply with the Open Meetings Act, just as you guys, you all have noted before. And this is a notice to sell $5 million worth of bonds. I need to apologize to you as board members and the superintendent. I stubbed my toe. I made a mistake. And when we originally submitted the resolution to you on page four, uh, you may have that in front of you. It said that the total amount of bonds to be sold was two million five hundred. Everywhere else in the resolution, it says five million. And so I, uh, worked with Heather and submitted a page to you, which is an updated page. Um, you may have that in front of you and it reflects five million instead of 2.5 million. So my apologies to you on that. Um, I, I also, uh, talked with, uh, Tommy and uh, what I would like to note is if you approve this, we will, uh, correct that in the final form and note for the general public, uh, those who are there present and those who may be listening, that we are correcting that small typographical error. Um, I sometimes refer to it as a Scrivener's error, but that's probably too euphemistic. I goofed. Um, and as Eric said, uh, we have parameters which we have to meet in order to sell the bonds. We will on October thirtieth, ask the superintendent, because you were delegating to the superintendent authority to sign a bond purchase agreement. So we will have a bond purchase agreement before you, which will have the interest rate approved by the New Mexico Finance Authority. And with that, uh, I'm going to just move to the next step, which is we have an author, a, a resolution authorizing uh, the submission of an application to the New Mexico Finance Authority to assist with the financing of this $5 million bond issue. As Eric pointed out, uh, at this point in time, with the market as it is, the New Mexico Finance Authority presents the best interest rate, the best deal to this district. And so I, like Eric, recommend that we approve the, uh, application to the Finance Authority and proceed with that type of financing. And, uh, I point out finally, all of this is in accordance with the New Mexico state law and has to the extent its tax exempt references to federal tax. and has, to the extent it's tax exempt, references to federal tax law, all in order. And with that, I would stand for any questions that you have.
I don't have any questions, no ma'am.
No, I sure don't.
Thank you for your assistance and diligence.
I turn it back to the Superintendent then for a recommendation.
And I would make the recommendation that you approve that.
Okay, do we need to consider them separately? There's uh, sale and delegation. And then that. So let's start with B, consider notice of sale and delegation of.
I move to approve second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item C is also considered.
I move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the uh, New Mexico Finance Authority application, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Art.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Have a great evening.
You too.
The next item that I have is the consideration, oh, excuse me, is the Auditor's Engagement Letter. Uh, this letter outlines the scope, objectives, and responsibilities of the auditors, as well as the responsibilities of the district. And I stand for any questions.
We've been really good and straightforward, so.
I don't have any.
I don't have any either.
No discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item I have is a consideration by the Inventory Committee to remove technology items from the district inventory that are broken, worn out, non-reparable, and obsolete.
Discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Hamilton, a second by Mr. Corova, to uh, approve the disposal of technology items, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The final items I have um, is for the consideration of three permanent cash transfers. The first one is the food service fiduciary account. Uh, to move that to a activity, a fundraising activity account. Uh, this is going to um, be used to support the various student nutrition department activities, as well as assist with their food truck that they're going to be getting um, in regards to like the events or any traveling they, they have. And I stand for any questions on that. Specifically.
We, we do know about the food trucks.
The other two permanent cash transfers stem from the Facility Master Plan. The transfer of funds are due to the closure of Cameo and the relocation of Lockwood students to other school sites. And the purpose is to cover um, any expenses such as field trips um, at the recipient schools and to ensure that the funds are directed to those schools that received those students who helped raise those funds. And I stand for any questions.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to uh, approve the permanent cash transfers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady.
Good evening, President Osborne, Members of the Board, Superintendent Russ. I'm here to update you on the uh, K two five youth program. I have with me Eric Schrod, who is doing an amazing job as our coordinator. He's got a brief presentation that gave you a look like football.
Congratulations on your.
Appreciate it. Uh, good evening, President and Board Members and Superintendent Russ. Thank you guys for having me and allowing me to talk to you guys today and update you on our youth programs we have going. Um, so a quick update, um, flag football, we have fifty-five teams, um, forty-five coaches. And then we have twelve paid refs. Those are all, all three of those are majority students, um, all the refs are students. And we have about four of our CMS employees that are coaching teams, but other than that, the other fifty-one teams are all our students coaching those teams as well. We have six paid site supervisors, not including uh, Mr. Pickett and Jay Brady, who are also here um, on the Saturdays, including me as well. And those are all of our staff members, um. Um, yeah, like coaches and stuff like that. As far as the scheduling, so all our practices are now moved to Hillcrest. We were having them at the individual elementary schools, but it accommodates us better for me to have eyes on everyone, to just have them all at Hillcrest. Um, the city gave us a building, so I have all the supplies held over there. And so everybody's practicing at that site, um, Tuesdays through Fridays. And we have, the seasons will be played, we started on September seventh, the last game will be October nineteenth. Uh, we had a rain, we had to reschedule the game this weekend, so I'll, we'll probably just extend one of the Saturdays to make up for the game they lost. Um, e- each Saturday, we'll have twenty-seven games that'll be played on six different fields. Um, so that'll be obviously grades K through five, and then each team is allowed to practice twice a week. So that's kind of how we organize that. As far as, um, like, are league opportunities that we're providing is employing opportu- employment opportunities for students. Obviously, they being a full-time student is kind of hard to have a full-time job, so this gives them a chance to earn some employment this way, as far as coaching and refereeing and stuff like that. We also have mentorship and leadership opportunities as far as our older Wildcats being able to pay, pay back forward to our younger children and giving those younger children someone to look up to and model theirself after. And obviously, we have fundraising opportunities. Right now, we have our basketball team that's doing the concession stand on Saturdays at the park as well, and we'll have that open to other programs as well for opportunity for them to fundraise some money outside of their normal fundraising opportunities. Um, and then we'll open registration, we'll open up tomorrow for volleyball. Um, we plan on starting that um, the first week of November after our volleyball season for our, our girls' team concludes. Because ideally, we would like our volleyball girls and our coaches to have a hand in that, to kind of help push that forward. Um, basketball will start in the spring. That'll conclude, that'll start, obviously, after our varsity boys' season concludes. Because I want them and the coaches to also have a hand in that. I mean, their track will be in March as well. So as far as the seasons, we kind of organize them based off of when our seasons at the high school conclude, so that we can have some ownership of what's going on at the lower levels. Because if we want our stu- if we want this stuff to sustain and we want to see progress in our higher levels, like, we need to have ownership at the lower levels, and this starts at the foundation, obviously, with, with our little kids and kind of getting them incorporated into what it's like to be a Wildcat and how to compete and, and have fun and doing it the right way. So that's kind of how, how we organize things like that. And then so as far as things we got planned in the future, obviously, expanding programs, it's not, it's not just obviously, the sports, it's, it's everything, um, as far as art programs. Um, getting into some of the multicultural things that we, I spoke with the dance coaches and the cheer coaches and kind of expanding out and having an opportunity for all kinds of students other than just sports and athletics, obviously. In the summertime, uh, we discussed like some arts programs and things like that, but having this, just a, 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 a great thing for the community as a whole and understanding that we need, we need to have more opportunities for kids to do more things out here, because it's a lot of things trying to pull them away from what's important right now. So the more things we can offer as um, as a school district, the better off that will be. We can put a hand on them early and kind of help guide them in that aspect. Um, and then obviously with the, we're planning on implementing the programs into P E, into their curriculum, so that'll kind of help us with uh, the day-to-day task of trying to get practices and all that kind of stuff. It'll be a lot easier, especially with basketball, um, which we're projected to have. For flag football, we have over six hundred kids signed up for that, that are participating in that. Um, but basketball, we expect about like twelve hundred probably or so. So obviously, it's a man that we, we're going to have to get some of that stuff going in P E as well. We can't, we just can't. We don't have enough gyms to kind of practice and all that kind of stuff. Um, and the grand scheme of things, the ideal for this program is just to make CMS the destination for development in New Mexico. Um, so obviously, if we can get that going from, starting from ground one, then obviously we can sustain and keep more of these kids at home and not going off to Melrose and Texco and all those places, so. That's, that's the goal, so. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to tell you thank you and that I think you guys are doing a wonderful job and it's really exciting. Um, so keep up the good work.
Well, I appreciate that, and the community has given me a lot of great feedback and that, I, it's just the consistency that I always hear is this is what Clovis needs. Um, and, and I, and I'm happy to hear that, and, and this is something Clovis is going to sustain, so. I appreciate you guys and I appreciate everybody else for taking the time to hear me out today.
I do want to emphasize uh, Cory Pickett's participation. Director of Fine Arts, and uh, he's been there every Saturday, filling in the gap and helping any way he could. And so uh, I do anticipate a lot of participation when it gets to basketball, but we're going to reciprocate that, and I want to talk about the team. Uh, Mr. Strickland and I will be there to fill the gap from Mr. Pickett while he's coaching. Not that he can't do his job, but being everywhere and doing everything all at once is an impossibility. So there's a lot of support and there's a lot of team going in to making this thing work across the board for kids. And then Mandy Carpenter has been exceptional about helping us find boosters that would uh, help us to be able to offer concessions and open the door and pave the way for other organizations as we move forward. It's a great fundraising opportunity for our high school programs to be able to tap into that many kids and families out there uh, on those Saturdays. So thank you very much for everything that you've approved, and we look forward to updating you once we get done with volleyball.
Very exciting.
The other, the other day, I was picking up my daughter from dance and uh, we drove by Sandia. And it was just amazing to see all these kids out there. Little ones, you know, all the way up to, to fifth grade, but um. The most important thing that I saw that really hit me was just the parents. Lot of lawn chairs out there and, and you know, to me, that's just something, you know, uh, parents finding the time to spend with your kids, you know. It's not about, I, I, of course, it is about them out, being out there playing sports. But it's more, in my eyes, family time together. And you know, uh, this guy's good. I, I really liked what he said, especially the fact of, you know, we're losing a lot of kids to, to other areas. You know, and, and uh, it's, it's uh, frustrating, you know, some, you know, we need to find a way to keep them here. You know, so they're, they become Clovis Wildcats, you know, for whatever reason. But it, I think it's awesome to see you guys taking leadership out there and being out there. You know. I mean, it's what it's all about. It starts in-house and as long as we do that, I think in about five years or so, or if not sooner, you know. It's going to be looking different around here. I appreciate you guys for that.
Thank you very much.
Agreed. Okay, open forum.
Madam President, no speaker registration cards were submitted in person, nor were there any online submissions for public comment or speaker registration.
Thank you. Okay, announcements.
October eleventh through fourteenth will be fall break um, at our campuses, no school for students, campus is closed. Same for district offices on October fourteenth. We will reconvene here on October twenty-second for our next regular Board of Education meeting at five thirty P M. And that is all that I have, other than to reiterate the congratulations to Zia Elementary. More news on that as we prepare to celebrate their Blue Ribbon status.
Well, good news, right? All right, I would entertain a motion to.
Aye.
All right, we have a motion and a second future and all in favor?
Aye.